Many times, many ways. A Merry Christmas to you. Have yourself a merry, a very, very merry, merry Christmas. Yeah. Merry Christmas. Have yourself a merry, a very, very merry, merry. Would you do that? Yeah. Have a Merry Christmas. Have yourself a merry, a very, very merry, merry, merry Christmas. To you. Have yourself a merry, a very, very merry, merry Christmas.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of December 15th, 2015, to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco, Hart, Hodgkins, Mario.
Here.
Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips here. In two minutes up at the podium, we'll start with Kenneth Locke, to be followed by Pete Del Bello.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Hey, I was just thinking this morning, and I'm going to spend some time thinking about it more, but the idea of being, what it means to be wealthy, and also healthy, and it turns out that I'm going to get in and kind of explain the nature of how the two are interrelated. And it's the idea of, it's kind of like a, like the cross with the circle. It's called the atonement, where the two, you take one, like, say, health, and then wealth, and then how that circle would be where they were, where they're connected. And the idea is that I'm finding that our so-called wealth system is not based on a person being healthy. And example would be that through tennis, because I'm actually claiming to be the first healthy and wealthy tennis player, based on the fact that I've been raised up as kind of a teacher healer in relation to the having of sound mind and sound body, holistic health and all that, for tennis now. And the likes of like a Djokovic, who I use example of on Twitter, mentioning that the idea that his wealth that he acquired was actually based on a relatively unhealthy relationship. And it was actually based on acquiring wealth from actually people who are, you know, from my perspective, not healthy. So the idea of that, the side effects associated with, was that it's kind of imbalance. The key is, is that for, let's say, the children, to, once this economy, we realize that it collapses, is to rebuild it with the idea of education, where the kids will be taught knowledge which would be based on them increasing their health. So they'd be, we recognize the nature of sound mind, sound body, and then the idea is that when they acquire a job and wealth, that it actually is based on that. Thought I'd share that with you today. Thank you.
Pete Del Bello will be followed by Carl Wagner.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Pete Del Bello. I am a Santa Barbara native, and I will be running for City Council in 2017. I come before you today with an ongoing problem in my District Four neighborhood of Eucalyptus Hill Road and Barker Pass Road. As K E Y T reported, safety signs and traffic calming devices in this neighborhood have been vandalized and stolen lately. Residents are asking for more police patrols. We are going to put other signs up soon. Over the weekend, three tall traffic control stanchions on Barker Pass Road have been cut down, most likely by a chainsaw. Here's a picture of the, one of the stanchions, and, that I took last night after attending the Water Commission meeting. On Monday, a Santa Barbara police officer had pulled over several vehicles by early afternoon for a variety of violations. This includes speeding and illegal cellphone use. I worked on this issue several years ago, and with the assistance of Councilman White, I was able to get, we were able to get some signage up in the area. That was several years ago. And unfortunate, and as a child growing up in the area, this was never a problem of this nature. Naturally, there's more people in the area, but still, we did not have speeding and people driving into front yards as we do now. It's at least not anywhere near this frequency. Unfortunately, 2015 has been this problem's worst year by far. As a member of the Eucalyptus Hill Improvement Association, I ask for further support of the City Council, the police, and traffic engineer. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for your time.
Carl Wagner will be followed by Richard Robinson. The final speaker will be Lee Muldaver.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to bring to your attention something that's really concerning to me. Within the last month, somewhere in the close proximity of Santa, I'm sorry, Cota and Santa Barbara Street, there's been reports of shots fired. I woke up quarter to three o'clock in the morning, officers at my door searching for someone suspected of the shootings. Approximately two weeks later, I myself was awake on a Friday evening, and I myself heard the shots, several shots. I reported it to the police. I called 911. Took the officers approximately six, six and a half minutes to show up. First, I want to say that they were disbelieving, which kind of was surprising to me. Upon checking with others in the neighborhood, they substantiated that the shots were fired. One of the last comments that the officer, the first responding officer said to me was that we, she asked if I had ever, if her called 911 or reported a crime before, to which I had said yes. She had suggested to me that I not do it, do so in the future. And I find that shocking when, on this particular situation, we have reports of shots being fired within a 300-yard radius on more than one occasion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Robinson will be followed by Lee Muldaver, and then Tom Widro.
Honorable Mayor, members, the reason for the season. Ma'am, because Jesus sent the Comforter 2,000 years ago, we enjoy the highest standard of living best, the United States of America. Because Christ Jesus' life is a propitiation, His second coming will bring in the new millennium a thousand years of peace, prosperity. God creating itself left eternity, infinity, and space, creating us, when the immaculate conception, the only begotten Son of God, God in the flesh, as He was being translated on the cross, told us that He would send a Comforter. That Holy Spirit is here. Today, it's here. St. John 4:24. As Bing Crosby, Johnny Mathis, Nat King Cole sang Christmas carols, Old Ton and Bonn, Old Holy, that little drummer boy Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, but Gene Autry and other favorites, let us not fail to recall the greatest hymn, the greatest amazing John Because the most precious gift given us is from the giver. His life is a propitiation. St. Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John tell us, Isaiah 53 prophesied, "As you sit down to eat sumptuously turkey and dressing, don't fail to forget," excuse me, don't forget, don't fail to recall, remember the reason for the season. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider, members of the council. I am Lee Muldaver, a longtime city resident. I'm really pleased to see that there's a school youth group in the back of the auditorium, because as we come to the end of the year, two of the people that we're most used to seeing in this building, the hall of the people of Santa Barbara, will be seen less frequently. One is our Transportation Planning Manager, Browning Allen, who came here for a short stint from the city of Carpinteria when George Girth passed away, whom Councilman White and Hart remember well. And we were very lucky to have Browning Allen spend a big part of his career in successful public service with the city of Santa Barbara. And it's hard to believe, although Chancellor Yang often publicly extols interdisciplinary and multidisciplinary engagement, within the family of departments in the city of Santa Barbara and all the transportation and infrastructure organizations that he has to deal with, especially with no T legislation from a dysfunctional Congress for about the last dozen years, the fact that he was able to keep things together, I think is a great tribute to him. In addition, Councilman Francisco will be relinquishing a seat to a new structure in Jason Dominguez in January, but that will be Jason's day. I want to say that there hasn't been any brighter, more thoughtful, harder-working member of council in this chamber the last few years than Dale Francisco. I didn't always understand his key points, and just like with Browning Allen, I didn't always agree with his suggestions. But for the students in the back, it's the hallmark of civic engagement and democracy, that bright, talented people are willing to give so much from their lives to help make this a better community. So I want to say thank you to Dale and Browning, and happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. Well said.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Tom Widro, City Watch. On behalf of our organization, which as you know is a watchdog group in favor of the same things I think all of you are, which is good governance, just wanted to say thank you and Merry Christmas, happy holidays, gratitude for all of your service. I know you all don't do this for the money, so it's fantastic that we have people here in our city with your talent and your capacity here to commit your time and effort to do right by the people of Santa Barbara. And at City Watch, I think that's, that's much appreciated, and I'm conveying that gratitude here today. Also specifically to Dale Francisco for his term in office. He's, I think, done an outstanding job, and I think not just City Watch, but everyone else, as Lee was saying, is grateful for, for what you've done and the way you handle yourself up there. It's a job well done. Tomorrow, I'll be on the radio on KZSB 1290. I've had the pleasure of having the mayor on the show, Dale, you've been on the show. I took Frank's place on the show. So if any of you'd like to listen in, you can, because I'm going to do a year-end review and talk about some of the big issues, and you've dealt with a lot this year. Everything from ZIRs, which we'll be talking about again today, Franceschi House, RVs, the water situation and the drought, the homeless, the mentally ill on the street, golf course, maintenance outsourcing, short-term rentals, road maintenance, and a possible sales tax that might come up next year. It's been a busy year for all of you, and you certainly handled yourselves well. We've had some disagreements on behalf of the City Watch, but if you'd like to tune in or certainly come by, you'd be welcome to. Once again, that's from 10 to 11. We might even do a roast of Dale Francisco on the radio. It should be fun. All right? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. It's on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item two, introduction of ordinance for the grant of easements to the Santa Barbara County Flood Control District Cota Bridge Replacement Project, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving the granting of easements on city-owned properties adjacent to Mission Creek to the County of Santa Barbara Flood Control and Water Conservation District for flood control and all related purposes, and authorizing the city administrator to execute as necessary the easement deeds in a form approved by the city attorney. Item three, acceptance of bicycle and pedestrian easement gift at 350 Hitchcock Way, including recommendation A that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara accepting an easement for use as a public bicycle and pedestrian pathway and all related purposes on the real property commonly known as 350 Hitchcock Way, and consenting to the recordation of the easement deed in the official records county of Santa Barbara. Item four, navigation and noise easement for 630 Hollister Avenue, Golita, including recommendation B that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara accepting an navigation and noise easement imposing conditions on real property known as assessor's parcel number 073050046, and consenting to the recordation of the easement deed in the official records county of Santa Barbara. Item 14, reclassification of two senior building inspector positions in community development, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 15056, the position and salary control resolution for fiscal year 2016 affecting the Community Development Department effective July 4, 2015. And item 15, adoption of ordinance to establish a definition for vessel for craft berthed, moored, or anchored in the harbor district, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by amending section 1704010 and adding section 1712050 to establish a definition of vessel for craft berthed, moored, or anchored in the harbor district.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the readings. Anyone need to take an item off, or is there a motion for the consent calendar? Moved by Rouse. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Francisco. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and heard a report very similar to the report that we're about to hear here, from staff on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015, and after hearing that, recommended that the full council accept it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so that, item number 19.
Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2015.
Great. Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Finance Director. And as Mr. Francisco indicated, we did give a detailed presentation to the Finance Committee a little while ago, and so this report will be abbreviated. I have to my right Ms. Jennifer Tomaszewski. She is our Accounting Manager. She started about six months ago, and right away had to work on preparing the year-end and doing this CAFER, and I really wanted to congratulate her on an amazing job. She worked lots of hours, her and her staff, she'll, she'll recognize, but I just wanted to recognize Jennifer for the work she did this, the past six months to put this together on time. We also have Richard Kakuji. He is a partner at Lanzall-Lunghard. They are our CPAs, auditors, who come in every year to audit our books, and he'll have a few comments about the results of their audit and their work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tomaszewski. She'll carry most of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am Jennifer Tomaszewski, and I am the Accounting Manager for the Finance Department. And today I will be presenting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for June 30, 2015. And I do have a couple extra copies of the report, if anybody needs them. We did leave some in your offices, but I realize you may not have had a chance to look at those, so would you like? Okay. Okay. So for the presentation today, we will be discussing some back, some background information, some financial highlights, some key footnote disclosures, and audit requirements and results. Before I go too far into the report, I would also like to acknowledge the accounting team who worked a lot of long, hard hours, a lot of weekends, to make this a quality product. Lynn Sparks, the Accounting Supervisor, Doug Smith, and James Hamilton, senior accountants. They are very professional, hardworking people, and we could not have done this without them, so. Some background information. What is a CAFER? It's an annual financial report prepared in accordance with nationally-recognized accounting and financial reporting standards, or generally accepted account, generally accepted accounting principles. It presents the financial condition and results of operations, I'm, I'm sorry, operations of the city as a whole and for the individual funds. It's comprehensive because it includes information not required for financial reporting, which allows it to qualify, qualifies the report for the Government Finance Officers Association's Awards Program. And I did say this in the Finance Committee, that the city has received this award for 12, the last 12 years, and we are hoping to get that again this year, so. It also just provides the reader more information about the city's finances. So why is a CAFER prepared? Well, it's prepared because the city, the city charter requires that it's prepared and audited by an independent CPA. It's required by state law. Bonding, bond rating agencies use this to determine credit risk, and it communicates important financial information to the public about the city's finances. So there was a big change this year. GASB statement number 68, fiscal year 2015 was the first year that that has been, that that's been implemented for the city, and so we're going to talk about some of the impacts of that. We're going to discuss the government-wide statements. In 2001, GASB 38 was implemented that required government agencies to report on an accrual basis, showing all assets and liabilities. And the purpose was to have agencies present financial information as a whole, similar to the manner that, that financial statements are reported in the private sector. And then we will look at a few individual funds. These are reported in fund financials. These are more short-term and focused, and report on a modified accrual basis, and the purpose is to report the condition of the individual fund. These don't include capital assets or long-term debt. And then, so specifically, we will be discussing the general fund, the self-insurance fund, and other post-employment benefits fund. And then we have a section for some key footnote disclosures. So again, new this year was GASB statement number 68, accounting and financial reporting for pensions. It was adopted in 2012 and effective for fiscal year 15, and there are three key changes to that. The unfunded liabilities of the pension obligation are now reported on the face of the financial statements rather than just in the footnote disclosure. And the net pension liability on the balance sheet equals the liabilities minus the fair value or market value, as opposed to the actuarial value and how actuaries used to report the, the market value, or, I'm sorry, the assets of the, of the pension plans. And then there are a few additional disclosures. So we will see the effects of GASB 68 on this, on this next slide. But this is, just to back up for a second, this is the government-wide statement of net position at June 30. And what this, what this shows is, for government-wide report, or government-wide statement reporting, we have two different types of funds. We have governmental funds, and traditionally, traditionally, these are associated with local government and normally supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenues. And these include the general fund, the special revenue funds, internal service funds, and then we have business-type activities, and these are going to be your enterprise funds. And these are, these funds rely primarily on user fees and charges to fund their operations. But, but this report presents the, the net position of the city as a whole. In this first section, we see that we have, at the end of the year, 1.1 billion in assets, and over half of that being in the enterprise funds. Thank you. And then the next section, we see under liability, the liabilities, we have current liabilities, and then we have, new this year is the net pension liability. And so this is new for 2015. And then we have other non-current liabilities, for a total of 448 million. And what you'll see is the net pension liability is about, well, it's over half of the total liabilities. I don't like saying that word for some reason. When we look at the difference between your assets and liabilities, we have the net pension, our net position, excuse me. The majority of that, 728.8 million, is net investment in capital assets, and this is your capital assets minus depreciation and minus debt. And the restricted, these are external restrictions imposed by creditors, grantors, contributors, by regulation. About 52 million of this is restricted for affordable housing. And then the other effect you'll see of GASB 68 is the third category of unrestricted. And what you see this year is a deficit of 147.8 million. If we were to back out the effects of GASB 68, we would be looking at about 115 million opposite direction. This makes up, this is typically comprised of your policy reserves, your non-spendable loans receivables, those types of things. So that is a big number, but with both the net pension liability and the deficit in unrestricted, however, this is required by GASB, and it's affecting every agency. So it's not going to impact, for example, credit risk or anything like that, but it is a required number moving forward that we will be responsible to report.
Just a quick comment. You know, the net position is really a measure of the financial health of an organization at a point in time, June 30, 15, in this case. So if you were to just look at this out of context, you'd see that most of our net position is invested in capital assets. When you back that out, we are upside down. We are in the negative. And again, if you look at it out of context, you would think that we are really in poor financial health, and of course, we're not. This is a number that we've always had to disclose in our footnotes. We now, under GASB rules, have to disclose it and put it on the face of our financial statements. In reality, again, as Ms. Tomaszewski indicated, it's not going to have real, any real impact because this is something everybody knows, but we've been talking about it for years. GASB just felt it was more transparent to put this on the financial statements versus at the footnote disclosure.
And again, this is just, it's the same, it's the same information as on the last slide. It's just looking at the liability section with regard to the net pension liability. Okay, this next, this next slide is the statement of activities, for the governmental activities. And we did go over this in much more detail with the Finance Committee, but the main purpose of this slide is to point out that the net change for the year was about 18 million to the good. And on the same, this is the same slide for business-type activities. And again, business-type activities, this shows a deficit of about $1 million. And typically, business-type activities, they generate the revenue in their own programs to offset their program costs. We do know, however, with water, with regard to water this last year, due to the drought and conservation efforts, that we just didn't sell as much water as we anticipated, and this did create a deficit in the water fund. So that, those were the government-wide financials. Now we're looking at the individual funds, specifically the general fund. So this is the balance sheet for the general fund, and again, it does not include capital assets or long-term debt. So in total, the general fund had about 41 million in assets at the end of the year, and about 25 million... And about 25 million of that is cash and investments, and about 8 million in liabilities, for a fund balance of about 33.2 million. And that fund balance is comprised of non-spendable, which again, those are your loans receivables and advances. Restricted of about 2.5 million. Those are going to be external constraints by external creditors, such as encumbrances. And then committed, these are internal constraints. So these are formal action by city council for things such as policy reserves. And then the last category, assigned. These are identified for specific purposes, as designated by the city administrator or the finance director. And these include things like capital carryovers. And so that is the results for the General Fund for the year. And then this next slide, what we're looking at is the revenues and expenditures for the General Fund. And so this slide compares your annual budget to the actual results and a budget variance. So in the first category, you see revenues were budgeted at about 119.6 or .7 million, and the final results were about 118.7 million. That 118 million, that includes about 1.4 million in transfers in for a deficit of 911,000. Whereas the expenditures were budgeted at about 122 million, and ended the year about 116 million, and about 3 million of that was transfers out. And included in that transfer out is the city policy for the reserves for future capital outlay. So the results of that were a savings of about 5.3 million, for a net savings, again, comparing budget to actual, of about 4.4 million. But really, what the bottom line is, is that revenues came in about 118 million, and expenditures went out at about 116 million, for an excess of 2.3. And this is where you saw on the last slide the results in the fund balance. One other area that we would like to point out is the Self-Insurance Fund. And for the CAFER reporting purposes, these are combined on the CAFER. And I believe that the reference page number is incorrect. That should be page 150, I apologize. But this is made up of two funds, the first one being the Self-Insurance Trust Fund and the Post-Employment Benefits Fund. Now, over the last few years, these have been in a deficit for net position, and this is why we're presenting them today. Over the last few years, the Self-Insurance Fund has shown deficit due to higher estimated claims liabilities. And the OPEB Fund, this was new in fiscal year 2014. And it used to be that these were dispersed among the other funds. And a couple of years back, it was decided to be able to see the true picture of what that real liability is, is to put it in its own fund. And what we see as a result of that is the 16 million obligation for post-employment. This includes retiree medical, sick leave. And so as you can see, we are in a deficit there, and the city does plan to fund this eventually over time. However, it is a deficit at this point. So now we have some key footnote disclosures. One of the key areas for the footnote disclosures relate to the pension plans. And the purpose of this slide is to show the city's funded status to the pension plans with CalPERS. So you see, we have the miscellaneous plan, fire, safety, police. And these are for reporting years 2015. However, the valuation date is June 30, 2013. In that first column, the accrued liabilities, this is the amount that we should have in the bank to fund all obligations as of today. The second column, the market value of assets, is also new with GASB 68. This is where you would have seen the actuarial value in the past. Actuaries no longer report based on that, on the old actuarial value. And now with GASB 68, we do report with the market value. The actuarial values, these tended to be less volatile over time and trended to smooth the changes that occurred, but they were also slow to react to the market changes. So this third column, the unfunded liabilities, this is basically the difference between the two. And what you'll see is this gives us a funded status between 71.6% and 74.7% funded. I think in the last years, which is on the next slide, we were funded about 69% to 70%. So the funds are showing a higher funded status. We can, oh, no, go.
May I ask, how does the city of Santa Barbara compare to other cities' funded status? 70%, that doesn't sound bad, but...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murillo, that's a good question. I think we're pretty much in line with other cities and counties that are part of CalPERS in the state. I think we saw that a couple of years ago when this became, you know, during the recession and after all that. I think we are right in line with everybody else.
Okay. And then can I ask about the OPEB, or the other post-employment, is it benefits? Is that mainly medical insurance for retirees?
So what the number that we showed you included, the 16-point-something million dollars, that includes two components. It includes what we pay to retirees when they retire. It's a stipend. It ranges from $200 to $300, depending how long they've been with the city, and it's paid until age 65. So that's the accrued liability associated with that piece. It also relates to what, when employees retire and they have accumulated sick time on the books, we pay that out all at once. It's not paid over time, it's just a cash out. And we have to accrue liability for all those obligations as well. So that's the two components that it includes.
Thank you.
So, real quick, I'm going to just cover reserves. We mentioned this a few months ago, or a month ago, and we covered the fourth quarter before we had final numbers. These are the final numbers now for the General Fund reserves, and just happy to report that now that the numbers have come in final and settled. We are fully funded as of June 30, 2015. In fact, we have a slight surplus of $33,000. And of course, that surplus falls, it's available for appropriation, but it's great news. And I will point out that this does, this is after funding $861,000 into our capital fund. That was the policy that council gave us, the direction gave us, that we put 25% of the surplus over instead of 50% to help fund the reserves by 2017. So we're really two years in advance. The only thing I will tell you in terms of full transparency is what this does not include is any potential impacts of an unfavorable outcome to the Jaxx case, where our franchise fee for electric is being challenged. We feel confident about that. But that's a potential exposure in excess of $2 million. So that would have an impact on these numbers. But absent that, we are looking pretty good as of June 30, 2015. And this is just a picture that is associated with those numbers. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Kikuchi, who will talk about their work and the results of the audit.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rich Kikuchi, and I'm a partner with LSL CPA's, your auditors. And I'm here, along with Finance Department, to present your CAFER to you and also to kind of talk about the audit just briefly. There's been a lot of financial information that's been shared with you. And if you had a chance to take a look at the CAFER, there's a lot of information in there. And it really is a snapshot of the city of Santa Barbara financially at June 30, 2015. Now, this information is there for you to make management decisions on and, you know, going forward, it's going to help you put your budget together. So the role of the auditor, what my role is, is basically to come in with a team of my people to make sure that we feel comfortable that the amounts in that comprehensive annual financial report are materially correct. And in order to do that, we did a lot of different types of test work, interviews with city employees. We came out in May and did a lot of internal control test work. We came back out in September and October to do a lot of test work on assets, liabilities, a lot on GASB 68, because that was implemented, as you saw, this year. And so based on that information, there's actually, in that CAFER, is a two-page document. It's our auditor's opinion letter. And so I'm happy to announce that we issued an unmodified opinion, which basically is saying that without modifications, without any reservations, we feel, I feel, that the amounts in that document are materially correct. Now, in order to, you know, get to the point where I can make an opinion, like I said, we came out and did a lot of test work on your system here at the city. And towards that end, if during the course of that audit we determined that there are any weaknesses, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies that we felt should be reported to the governing board, we would do so in that separate internal control letter, which hopefully you all got a copy of. And so I'm happy to announce that during the course of the June 30, 2015 audit, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so that the controls looked sound. And so I'm here to, you know, representing LSL. I'm here to answer any questions, if you might have any, regarding the audit.
And that does conclude our report, so all of us are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any speaker slips? No. Anything from the council? So just to summarize, especially for the school group, like, what was that all about, right? This is what I got, okay? We had a successful audit. The General Fund spent less than we brought in. Because we conserved water, we have a deficit in our water fund. So we might have to raise rates because we're conserving water in a drought. We met our council policy reserves first time in 10 years. And we are slightly more funding our pension liabilities, and we're in line with the rest of the state in that capacity. Is that about it? See? So that's what happened.
They just said that.
Okay? Well, that's good. No, and of course, it's due to a lot of work on this council's part in putting a budget together with the recommendation of staff, but obviously, a lot of work of all the staff in staying within our resources and within the budget and finding savings where we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We do need to, we do need a motion.
Move the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Moved by Murillo, second by Rouse. All in favor? Aye. Great, that's unanimous, thank you.
And can I collect those extra CAFERs?
Bring the extra reminders over. Okay. Item 20.
Successor agency transfer of property to the city and city acceptance of property and assumption of obligations. Recommending, A, that the successor agency adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, transferring all right, title, and interest to the real property described herein, subject to certain existing leasehold interests, agreements, and other encumbrances on the multiple parcels of real property, which are together most commonly known as Paseo Nuevo Retail Center, owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the executive director to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate the transfer of real property interest to the city of Santa Barbara. B, that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara accepting all right, title, and interest to the real property described herein, subject to certain existing leasehold interests, agreements, and other encumbrances on the multiple parcels of real property, which are together most commonly known as Paseo Nuevo Retail Center, owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the city administrator to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate the transfer of real property interest to the city of Santa Barbara. C, that the successor agency adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, transferring for public transportation, public parking, and all related purposes, all right, title, and interest to the governmental purpose real property described herein, which are together most commonly known as Santa Barbara Railroad Depot, owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the executive director to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate such transfers of real property interest to the city of Santa Barbara. And D, that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara accepting and assuming for public transportation, public parking, and all related purposes, all right, title, and interest to the governmental purpose real property described herein, which are together most commonly known as Santa Barbara Railroad Depot, owned by the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the city administrator to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary to effectuate such transfer of real property interest to the city of Santa Barbara.
All right, I'm going to let Mr. Bossi explain that one. Go ahead, Mr. Bossi, good to see you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy, I'd be happy to explain that. Today, we are here proposing two properties be transferred back to the city, two very important properties within our community. And so I'm going to start out with a little background. Back on January 22 of 2013, the State Department of Finance, or DOF, approved the transfer of all of our parking lots and parking structures, allowing those to go back to the city. Again, this all has to do with the redevelopment agency dissolution law back in February of 2012 and slightly prior to that. Now, the properties that were left, that were former redevelopment agency properties, included four properties. And they were subject to the Department of Finance's Long Range Property Management Plan Process, or LRPMP. Now, these property management plans provided, it was basically a summary of the properties, zoning and things like that, important information that the Department of Finance needed to know, as well as our proposed disposition of those properties. What were we proposing that we wanted to do with them, or not do with them? Those were submitted back in September of 2013 to the Department of Finance. All of our property management plans were approved by the State Department of Finance as of this May of 2015. And three of those four properties were approved to be transferred back to the city. And we're going to be dealing with two of those with this particular report. The fourth property, which is our Kai Caesar Chavez property, we had proposed that that be sold, and the state agreed with that. And I'll be talking about that in my next presentation today. So today's consideration by the successor agency and the City Council is to approve the transfer of the Paseo Nuevo and Railroad Depot properties back to the city. And again, as I mentioned, there is, of the three properties that we got the okay to transfer back to the city, there is one that's not on your agenda today, and that's the Bath and Ortega Park property. This requires a significantly different process that includes a compensation, that a compensation agreement be reached. And so we, as successor agency staff, need to work with all the different taxing entities. We're doing some research into that because we're kind of on the cutting edge here. We're going to be looking out to see if other communities have done this and how they did that. The law isn't really clear, so we're doing some research into that. But we hope to be back before you in the next few months with a compensation agreement and hopefully transferring that property at that time. And again, the Kai Caesar Chavez property is to be sold. So just giving you a little background on the two properties before today, I would imagine you're all familiar with them. The first is Paseo Nuevo. This is a little bit dated photo, but you get the idea. The property was assembled between 1987 and '89. It was acquired for the purpose of creating an urban, open-air retail shopping center. And the majority of the property that was put together included city parking lot number one, as well as De La Guerra Street. Now, Paseo Nuevo is by far the economic, social, and entertainment center of the South Coast. It is an economic engine. And as far as encumbrances, there are three 75-year ground leases on that property. This was all part of the original development. It goes from the first day of the year in 1990 through to December 31 of 2065. So again, three 75-year ground leases. Other obligations that go along with the property want to make you aware of what's being transferred, proposed to be transferred to the city, is the city must provide 1,100... being transferred, proposed to be transferred to the city, is the city must provide 1,115 parking spaces for 70, for that whole 75-year term. And we do that with our lots 2 and 10 that were constructed as part of that process. Also required to pay a portion of the PBIA fee, again, the Parking and Business Improvement District fee. Every, Paseo Nuevo pays the first $100,000, and we would be required to pay everything on top of that. It usually averages around $77,000. That fee is offset by the revenues from lots 2 and 10, which downtown parking gets. So, when these, when all of these obligations end, basically at the end of that 75-year lease, the city must determine what to do with the property. If the city decides to sell at that timeframe, we're gonna have to go into the compensation agreement process, which we'll be getting the handle on over the next few weeks, similar to the Bath and Ortega properties, although I would imagine a dollar amount might be significantly different. The next property is our Railroad Depot. These properties were assembled between 1993 and 97. They were acquired to restore the historic 1905 Southern Pacific Railroad Depot, which had fallen into disarray. The restoration was a joint effort between the redevelopment agency and Caltrans, California Department of Transportation. It was completed in 1999, and actually, I believe we had our opening around this time, 16 years ago. And it was placed on the National Register of Historic Places back in 2006. As far as encumbrances, it is encumbered with two current leases. The first is an Amtrak lease, which is currently on a month-to-month, waiting for this whole redevelopment agency dissolution process to resolve itself. The items before you today would help with that, and our downtown parking folks would be able to negotiate a long-term lease with Amtrak. The second lease out there is the Greyhound lease. They are in year, I believe, four of a 10-year initial term with two five-year options, and they pay about $4,000 a month. The Amtrak lease is a dollar per year. The annual operating expenses for the parking lots and maintenance and the like equal about $151,600, and the revenues, adding together the parking revenues and the lease of $48,000, just shy of that. So, it does operate slightly in the red. So, the proposed actions that Susan read earlier before you today are the transfer of the ownership of Paseo Nuevo and the Railroad Depot back to the City of Santa Barbara. And before, before you ask any questions, I just want to say, this is the culmination of a tremendous amount of effort. This is not an easy process. We're not done. It continues, but this particular, with the whole long-range property management plans, was a long and lengthy process, back and forth with the state. And I just, we had a lot of help from the city administrator's office, our city attorney's office, finance, community development. It was, it was very much a team effort, as well as public works, our engineering in downtown parking. So, it was truly putting all this information together and rehashing history. It was definitely a team effort, so I just wanted to make sure that got in there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There are no speaker slips for this item. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossy, on the evaluating something like the Bath and Ortega, which is a little tiny sliver of land, is there, I mean, what possible market valuation could that have? And then, the second question would be, in terms of this Caix Cesar Chavez property, would you explain, then, what happens then with the revenues and how those are, where they go, and who gets that?
That's the next agenda item, but perhaps we can, yeah, why don't you answer that? Yeah, we can put that as part of your presentation for the next item. That'd be great.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, regarding the Bath and Ortega property, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to figure out. When we worked with our oversight board to get them to okay our long-range property management plan and the, our idea of transferring it back to the city, it was basically at a zero-dollar value. The reason before, reason that is, very small piece of land, there's a park on it right now, we've also got creek setbacks, you've got, it's on a corner, so you've got setbacks on both sides of the property. It's gonna be an interesting process to determine exactly what that is worth as far as a compensation agreement is considered. And we'll, we can get back to you on that as, as we move forward.
Mr. Hart?
And does the same thing apply to, after 50 years, when the leases are up at Paseo Nuevo, whatever, if the city was to sell it, we'd have to appraise it, and then those funds would go to the state? We'd be able to retain control of the property and continue to lease it, additional lease terms? It's not required that we give that money back to the state or sell that property at that point in time, right?
That, Mayor, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, both your, your statements are correct. If we do choose, if the city does choose to sell it in, in 50-some years, then yeah, compensation agreement will have to be worked out. If the city wants to maintain ownership, ownership and negotiate a new lease, long-term lease agreement with a new owner, or with the current owner, whoever that is, at that particular time, they can also do that.
Are there any constraints on that lease? What that lease would be in terms of the state having any kind of control over those decisions at all?
No. I believe that's all here, would be if this process goes through with the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, without any other comments, we could use a motion?
Move the staff recommendation?
Moved by Hart, second by White. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Part one, part two, item 21, or item 20.
Successor agency real estate and business items.
Item 21, right. All right, keep going, Mr. Bossy.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Got a few successor agency business items before you today. The first is the selection of a real estate consultant. On May 15, as I mentioned in my last report, the successor, the successor agency was directed to sell the Caix Cesar Chavez properties through an auction process. Now, the properties, there are four parcels that equal about 2.4 acres. They are zoned M1, which is light manufacturing, and they have, do have a coastal overlay associated with them. The properties were purchased by the redevelopment agency as an opportunity acquisition back in, I believe it was April of 2001, for $2,872,000. Just to get you your frame of reference, these are the Caix Cesar Chavez properties. This is Fest Parker's Doubletree, and this is Caix Cesar Chavez. It's these four parcels, and it also fronts, over here is Casique Street. So, it's these 2.4 acres that we're discussing today. So, as you know, the city, and while, and the successor agency are not in the market of selling properties, so we released a request for proposals in late September. And the primary functions of a real estate consultant that we're looking for would be to extensively market the property, handle general inquiries on a day-to-day basis, provide open house opportunities, assist staff in determining the minimum reserve sale price, and conduct the auction sale, again, to the highest bidder. As far as determining the minimum reserve sale price, we currently have an appraisal being, being done on the property, and we will use that appraisal, as well as working with the real estate consultant to come up with a minimum sale price, which we would not go below. We received three very well-done proposals by the November 6 deadline. All the heavy hitters came through with proposals, and these folks were evaluated on a number of criteria, including experience, their project timeline, their work plan, and the proposed cost of their services. Staff, successor agency staff selected Radius Group as the best overall proposal, and took that to the oversight board on December the 7th. Our oversight board agreed with that and recommended that we move this forward to you, the successor agency, here today. As far as the cost of the services to be provided by the real estate professional, there is no direct cost to the successor agency. That cost will come from the sale price of the properties. As far as the timeline, again, not being in this business too often, we, these are all estimates, so we're, and we'll work with our, our real estate consultant to iron these out, as well as staff. We'd like to take the property out to market likely in late January. Again, we have to come up with that minimum reserve sale price. We then have to take that price to the oversight board to get them to approve it, and then it would be able to go out on the market. We anticipate the market time to be between two and four months. We want to make sure it's out there for an appropriate amount of time, but not too long. And we anticipate the sale escrow, everything done over, would be complete by the end of 2016, or hopefully sooner. So, that's the first. That was item number one. The second part of this, this report was regarding oversight board legal services. Back in 2012, the oversight board acquired the services, legal counsel of Price, Polstal, and Parma, as they are allowed to do per redevelopment agency dissolution law. Today before you, it's a proposed $15,000 increase to their services, so they can continue to work with the oversight board. This is good timing, as the state extended the, the work we're doing. It was, we thought it would be done in June of this year, but they bumped that out to June of 2018, so two more years. So, this is good timing, so they can continue to work with our oversight board. And the funds come from the successor agency's statutorily determined administrative budget. So, I believe we get approximately $250,000 a year for that, and so this would come out of that budget. So, with that, those are the two items for this particular council piece. Madam Mayor, if I can answer Councilman Hart's question, the proceeds from the sale of Caix Cesar Chavez gets distributed to the taxing entities. So, it's the percentage of property tax that the taxing entities receive. The city general fund will actually receive about 12 or 13% of the proceeds. A good majority go to the school districts, city college, flood control district, and such.
Mr. Francisco. And there's no public comment, speaker slips on this. Mr. Francisco.
Move recommendations A and B.
Okay. Moved by Francisco, second by White.
I have a question, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Is there another entity that will have an increase, such as we will have for the oversight board? We're talking about a proposed 15,000 increase. That comes from us, correct?
That comes from funds that are provided through our recognized obligation payment schedule. So, we are given 250, a maximum of $250,000 per calendar year, or per year, to, to pay for, you know, part of my salary, and all the other folks who are working on the redevelopment agency dissolution process. This would come out of that 250,000.
So, that's city only, then?
No, it's success, it's successor agency only. So, it doesn't impact the general fund.
All right.
This is completely separate, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm part of the, updating the zoning ordinance committee, and we're making changes to the, that particular zone. So, just letting you know that someone should be watching the changes that are happening that will relate to that property. Thanks.
Hey, that, I'm sure that'll be part of the, good point, because if you're looking to buy it, you want to know what the zoning is, so. Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we're now up to item number 22.
Contract with Santa Barbara Golf for management and operation of the Santa Barbara Golf Club.
All right, Mr. Sewell, whenever you're ready.
Madam Mayor and council, my name is Mark Sewell. I'm the Parks and Recreation Business Manager. And with me today, I have Jill Zachary, the Acting Parks and Recreation Director, and Tava Ostrenger. I'm sorry, didn't fit my English mouth. Ostrenger, who's the city, Assistant City Attorney. And we are here to recommend a contract for the management and operation of Santa Barbara Golf Club. I will also mention that we have Mark Rickonobara, a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission in chambers today, and also a number, a number of the golf advisory committee are here in attendance as well. So, Santa Barbara Golf Club is a key city recreation facility managed by the Parks and Recreation Department. And since 2008, Santa Barbara Golf Club has operated below city council policy reserve levels, and has continued to be challenged in terms of making enough revenue to cover the operating costs. And over the past year, we have been exploring options to resolve the long-term fiscal stability of the golf fund. Council in July, following a, a number of public meetings, issued direction to staff to pursue a professional golf management contract. Following that direction in July, Parks and Recreation Department, in consultation with a number of other city departments, created and issued a request for proposals, which was issued on the 27th of August. We sent that to 29 registered golf management companies, and also published it on the PGA, that's the Professional Golfers Association website nationally. September the 10th, we had a mandatory bid walk at Santa Barbara Golf Club, where we had 18 organizations attend that. And then, we received 10 proposals on September the 29th, which we selected five companies to interview for in the middle of October. And so, therefore, after that process, we're here to recommend a contract with Santa Barbara Golf Limited Liability Company, who are a subsidiary of Courseco Incorporated. Courseco are a California company based in Petaluma, and have 26 years of golf management experience. They operate 26 golf courses, a mixture of private and public, leased, owned, and managed, 15 of which are municipal in California. Their regional focus and size offer comparable benefits for Santa Barbara Golf Club, as well as expected economy of scale. Courseco management style focuses on home club development and developing the golf club as a community asset to bring more and more people there. Courseco presented a comprehensive plan to maintain and market the golf club. Their financial projections align with city council direction, that the golf course be fiscally sustainable, and they have a track record for growing revenue and rounds at municipal golf courses, similar to Santa Barbara Golf Club. They do this by introducing new programs and engaging more of the community. They have a number of collaborative partnerships with food and beverages, where they would work as, as a separate party. And they propose no significant fee changes to what the city has generally stood to do each year, looking at the market and incrementally changing moderately. The, we received very high, highly favorable references from a number of municipalities where they currently operate, which gave us confidence in their contract. As the golf course management company, Courseco will be responsible for maintaining the course and the facilities. They will operate the pro shop. They will be responsible for all of the recruitment and training of the maintenance and pro shop staff. They will be scheduling and administering and delivering tournaments and events, and they will be looking at our golf programming and continuing those successful programs we have for youth, women, and seniors, and looking to see what else is out there. And they bring an extensive sales and marketing background. Some key contractual terms to highlight for you. The initial term is four years and nine months, and in that first year, Courseco would be paid $80,000 as a management fee. The contract is structured to establish financial incentives for revenue growth and customer service performance. And following a successful first term, an option to extend for a further five years would be at the sole discretion of the city. Some other key aspects is that Courseco will hire certified superintendent and professional PGA pros to be able to operate the maintenance and the pro shop. That's the Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America, bit of a mouthful. For revenues, the city will own all revenues for golf operations. So, anything that's sold at the golf shop would be the city's revenue. And the city would reimburse all approved costs. And approved costs would be subject to annual budgets, full audit, full invoice, and, and then a check every, every month by the city staff. And Courseco will maintain the city policies that exist in terms of integrated pest management, water conservation, and will pay their staff the higher of prevailing wage, or Santa Barbara's living wage. The city will continue to have the control over the setting of greens fees, and that will continue in a similar way as it has already, with the department making recommendations, taking those through the various advisory boards, and then bringing them ultimately to city council as part of the budget process. We will continue to have regular audits on the pro shop and on the maintenance, and we will also be employing a third-party objective company to provide secret shopper services so that we can check on the customer service that's being performed. Maintenance standard are extensive, and they are included in the contract, and that, that will be a key focus for Parks and Recreation staff to ensure that there is compliance. And of course, as I mentioned, they will be operating under the, the budgets that city council approve. So, transition, this contract would commence on July the 1st, 2016. And so, we have a six-month transition plan to ensure a successful handover of maintenance and operations. Key areas of focus will be the staff transition and recruitment for key roles, collaboration with the existing concessionaires. with the existing concessionaires, ensuring that we continue with our popular and successful programs, and to obviously then look also how can we create some sales marketing plans that help us to achieve our revenue goals. Essential to the success of Santa Barbara Golf Club is the relationship between the pro shop and the restaurant. And Courseco have a number of similar relationships for, well, for exactly the same relationships at other properties that they operate. And they will be working with the current concessionaire to set some common goals and some frameworks so that they can take the lead for organizing events and give customers one point of contact so that they can achieve some seamless service. The permanent city employees. Consistent with council policy to avoid involuntary layoffs, the department will implement a transition plan for all permanent city employees. The department has held several meetings already with HR and SEIU, the union who represent those staff affected, and is in regular communication with the golf staff. We're also including the hourly staff in these communications and encourage them wherever possible to look for opportunities to continue employment at the city or at the golf course should they choose. So we have seven full-time permanent employees who have not already been offered a transfer opportunity. And if that's still the case on June 30th, then those seven will transfer to the Parks Division on July the 1st, should they wish to continue employment with the city. They have other options. They can choose to retire. They can look to have employment with Courseco, or they could look to retire and have employment with Courseco.
I have a question on that. If they were to choose for employment with Courseco, does Courseco have to hire them as their employee?
So Madam Mayor, within the contract, we have set that Courseco will offer every interested employee an opportunity to interview for a role. So there's nothing in the contract that means that Courseco have to hire anyone.
Okay.
But of course, they would look to try and retain as many of the staff that they feel would be, have the experience and the knowledge to help them with the transition.
Okay. And the transfer to the Parks Division, is it for the same kind of work? Is, what kind of transfer are we talking about?
Madam Mayor, council members, yes, they would transfer in their existing classification to the Parks Division. They hold classifications similar to those that we already have in the department, and we've identified different areas in which they would work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this next slide speaks a little bit to that transfer. So there would be some short-term, over-hire positions, and as part of the transition plan, we are evaluating what those retention costs may be. We estimate that they could range from $333,000 to $617,000 in fiscal year 17, depending on how many of those staff wish to stay with the city employment. We don't believe that it would be the full 6.5 FTE, but at this time, those people are currently employed, and that's what it could be.
So, and to follow up on that one, is that cost associated now with the Parks General Fund or with the golf fund?
Madam Mayor, at this point, those decisions are still to be taken, and we will be coming back as part of our budget as to how we would look to fund those. And of course, there's probably going to be a bit of a change between now and as we get closer to the transition, as things become more certain about who has taken what decision and who really wants to stay with the city. We're just, at this point, saying what the worst-case scenario would be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so although the short-term staff would be in an over-high capacity, we do anticipate that with typical Parks Division vacancies as they arise, this would be absorbed fully within one to two years. Okay? And in the short term as well, there would be the opportunity for those extra hires to assist with the backlog of maintenance work in the Parks Division. The budget and the financial. Well, over the long term of the contract, we anticipate the golf fund will have an improved cash flow of more than $300,000 annually. This would enable the city to rebuild reserves to city council policy and to reinvest in the golf course to make it the asset everyone would like it to be. And so with that, we're here with a recommendation that council authorized a city administrator to enter into a management contract with Santa Barbara Golf to manage and operate Santa Barbara Golf Club. Thank you.
Okay, we do have some public comment speaker slips. I have one quick question, and if there are others, that's fine, from council. Given that the Monocity Country Club is now under renovations, there's no golfing going on there, I'm hopefully correct in saying we're reaching out to some of those members to come to Muni and extra marketing, and can someone comment on potentially have those players come to Muni because they can't come to the Monocity Country Club? Might be great timing for us.
Madam Mayor, yes, I can comment to that. So yes, we are actively reaching out to those golfers, and we're seeing a lot of them coming through to our golf course, and they're coming back, which is pleasing. When Monocity Country Club closed, the first full month we saw after that was October, and we saw play jump significantly. It kind of tailed back a little bit after that, and I believe the owner of Monocity Country Club has another of other interests in golf, and he is seeking to try and retain as many of those customers to his facilities. But yes, absolutely, we're looking to try and take that opportunity, and we have increased our marketing following council direction, and we have seen play increase this calendar year, but it's still not to the levels it would need to be to be able to cover the increasing costs that we have.
Okay. Do we know how long the Monocity Country Club's going to be under renovation?
Madam Mayor, I'm afraid I don't have that information. What I, the speculative information that I have from word on the street is that it's going to be 18 months probably.
Eight, one month per hole, sorry. Ms. Mario, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Sewell, thanks so much. I was looking over the contract, and it says here that some of the accounting services, the city will be paying the new company to do those services. So is that taking the place of work that the Parks Department did or the Finance Department?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, the accounting fee is a fee for Courseco to provide all of the back office functions for the payment of invoices and all the like. And so currently, those invoices are processed by city golf staff and then the Finance Department. So this, yes, there will be slightly less work going through the Finance Department for the processing of those invoices. However, there's only about 50 invoices a month, and that's a very, very, very small amount of the work that would go through the purchase ledger department.
Okay. I mean, I saw the tier of payments. It was $10,000 and $12,000, so that it didn't seem too minor to me. And how about the incentive management fee and this secret shopper 10 times per year? What's the cost on that? And did we do that under, when, are we doing that now to keep an eye on what's going on at the golf course?
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, this is a new program. We don't currently have any contractual language with the current concessionaire that speaks to customer service performance and then any incentives based on achieving certain goals. The cost of those, there's a fee for the company to come and do it, and then we would reimburse them also for the green fee and any other thing that they might do there. And that would annually be around $3,000 to $4,000 that the city would pay. And we feel that that's a good investment to make sure that we can have some objective and some measurable performances that we can compare to other golf courses to see that Courseco really are doing what they say they will do, which is to have very, very high standards of customer service. We feel that will bring golfers back.
Well, I have concerns about that as well. And will you be talking to the golfers themselves? Is there going to be a feedback process from people who use the golf course?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, there are a number of feedback mechanisms that we already have in place, which will continue. So we have formal feedback via the Golf Advisory Committee where we have members there who are there to speak on behalf of the golfers. That will continue. We do an annual survey as it stands, and we will continue those annual surveys where we canvass to our 6,000 or so email members and ask them for how they feel the golf course is performing. And then, of course, word of mouth and letters to council members, I'm sure, will continue to give us some feedback about how the new company are performing.
I was reviewing the minimum maintenance standards, which is Exhibit A to the contract, and pages 18, 19, and 20. They have quite a bit of standards here, looking if the buildings and the structures are in good repair, how is the trash being handled, are things vacuumed and dusted? So how will that be monitored?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, the intention is for the Parks and Recreation Department to allocate some management resource to the contract oversight. And so that, those people, it wouldn't be a full FTE, but there would be about 0.7 of an FTE, would be regularly visiting the golf shop and looking around and making sure that the standards are being adhered to. That would include the standards of the greens, the standards of the tee boxes, the fairways, the cleanliness, everything that we would consider and has been included within that maintenance standards.
You say visited regularly? Did monthly, or?
I would expect that staff will be there every day. Initially, definitely every day, and then as we would see, you know, expect the performance to be acceptable and hopefully at a very high standard, then the need to have staff there every day should reduce. The intent is not to have a city employee babysitting the contract. The intent is to have a city employee making sure that the standards are being adhered to. And the references that we've received from the other communities give me no reason to believe that that won't be the case.
Mr. Sewell, I'm particularly concerned about adherence to our integrated pest management program. And part of what I read through was that IPM coordinator is, is that going to be with the department, or is that going to be someone who will work specifically in the golf course? It seems terribly important considering the golf course is made up of natural habitat.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, we will have the Courseco adhere to the IPM strategy that the city has, similar to the way our current golf course superintendent. The IPM coordinator for the city is Santos Escobar. He will remain the IPM coordinator. They will need to work on an annual basis identifying where and what type of materials they might want to use on the golf course because there are some exempt areas. And if there is any situation where they need to actually go to the IPM Advisory Committee for approval to use the material, they would do the exact same thing that city staff would do, working with our IPM coordinator.
And regarding maintenance of the trees, under the current system, was that our forestry division? And now, how does that work? So the new contractor will take over taking care of the trees? How does that work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, currently, the golf fund is responsible for hiring contractors to maintain the trees. Our city arborist, urban forest superintendent, does provide advice regarding tree maintenance that will continue, and will continue to do that. The golf course is a city asset, so we would want to be sure that we're evaluating any tree proposals that the company might have. And it would be part of our annual operations and maintenance plan. We will be working closely with Courseco every year, like we do with our own staff and through our own sections, to determine what's needed for day-to-day maintenance, what's needed for one-time special maintenance, whether there are any small projects we want to proceed with.
Okay, so you're saying the contractor will maintain a relationship with our tree people, but their people will do the main maintenance. Is that right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, they will be responsible for whatever services are required to maintain, for example, the trees. And if we deem that it includes hiring a certified arborist to come do the tree work, which is currently what we do at the golf course for any significant tree work, that would remain the same.
Okay. And I noticed that in terms of the finances, that some employees may file suit or place claims, but that will be their, or lawsuits against the company, those will be their employees, right? Not ours, I guess?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, that's correct. The insurance that the city has for this contract means that the city has no liability for any of the actions that the Courseco employees might take.
And I think that's what it spelled out in the contract, that we wouldn't be responsible for any of that. Though I would like to know if there's problems there. I'm not sure how I would have that information. And then on slide number seven, under key contractual terms, options to extend, the city may extend for five years. Who makes that decision to extend? Would it return to the city council?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Mario, yes, it would return to council, and there would be a staff recommendation, and you could make a decision about whether you felt the performance was acceptable.
And finally, reclaimed water is available now, or will it be available in July 2016? Now, I'm hearing.
Councilmember, yes, reclaimed water is currently flowing on the golf course.
That's it for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Can you give me some more specifics about the incentives for revenue growth that are built into the contract?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Hart, yes, we're on a good slide to start that. So the incentive is kind of twofold, and I mentioned in the initial presentation it was based on revenue and service. And so for Courseco to earn any incentive, we must see gross revenues of higher than $2.7 million. Okay, to put some context into that, our most recent fiscal year that we finished was about $2.45 million. So it's a reasonable jump in revenue before they would receive any incentive payment. The second part of that would be that 30% of that incentive is contingent on them achieving a score for customer service, which would be measured via the third-party company, which is in excess of the benchmark for five comparable courses. So they achieve full incentive if they grow revenue beyond $2.7 million and they pass their customer service audits.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you. I didn't, maybe go back one slide, I'm looking here. How Courseco makes its money? And it charges for each round of golf, I would presume? No.
If I may.
I just, I didn't get a build, the pyramid of how this is going to work, I lost track of, or perhaps it was not fully described.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember White, it's a good question. The accountant in me is delighted to tell you a little bit about this. So the, all of the revenue, this is the first place to start, all of the revenue, whenever a customer goes into that pro shop now and pays a dollar for anything, that's the city's money, irrespective of what they're buying. Okay? So that's the first thing to say. The Courseco would not make any money from any transactions on that basis. Where Courseco are compensated is the management fee, and that's the $80,000 in the first year. So that's a payment for services. And then we will also, as a city, pay them for an accounting fee for them to offer those accounting services. So they're the two revenue streams that Courseco will stand to earn as a result of this contract. The third part of that, as we've just mentioned, would be their ability to grow revenues. They will then take a share of that, with 15% of the revenue above $2.7 million. So that's how they stand to earn good money.
And also reimburse their staff.
Yes. So, and just in terms of, as Mr. Casey's just said, the city reimburses all of the direct costs associated with the running of the golf course. So that will include the superintendent, the general manager, the PGA professional, and all of the staff involved to run the operation. So that $80,000 doesn't go towards paying for any of those costs.
Right. And right now, the, what is the revenue this year, shall we say?
So the revenue in the most recent fiscal year that was completed was about $2.45 million.
$2.45, okay.
And our budget for FY '17 is about $2.6. So as it stands, in the first year of the contract, if Courseco hit the budget revenue, they wouldn't stand to earn an incentive payment.
Okay.
They need to grow above that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Sewell, out of the 15 municipal golf courses this company runs now, is this contract, the template for this contract, similar to those other ones? Is it a typical relationship they have with those municipalities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, yes. The management agreement is a common model in the golf industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question. First year, and the initial term is four years, nine months. Will monitor that annually, and you'll report to us, is that correct?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, absolutely, yes. We'll have an annual budget. We will come to you in the same way with all of our expectations of revenues and costs, and we'll report to you on our variances against those.
If we're disappointed with their performance, what alternatives do we have?
So there are a number of default clauses in the contract. Something pretty severe would have to happen for us to want to recommend canceling the contract. But in many ways, the performance motivation for Courseco is to achieve the incentive fee and to grow revenue and customer service. And of course, there'll be regular reviews with city staff to ensure that they are doing what they say they'll do.
And you know, on these other contracts that they have with the, was it 15 other municipal courses, have they achieved that financial incentive? Have they won those?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I wouldn't be able to tell you whether it is how many out of the 15. I know that there are a number of communities where they are. I know that there are a number of communities where they are achieving as they said they would. And like I say, the references we've received from the municipalities that we did contact all have been very favorable in terms of their performance fiscally and in terms of how they've engaged customers.
And do they expect to achieve that in the first year, have they said, to achieve their financial incentives? Or is that too optimistic?
So Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, in the first year, and it's this third line down on the table, we're projecting about $2.6 million in total revenues, which is underneath the target for their incentive payment to kick in. So they'd have to do exceptionally well to receive an incentive payment. And of course, if they do exceptionally well, the city does even better because the city would keep 85% of that incremental revenue.
Sure. And is that projection in conjunction with them or is that our projection, if I can put it that way?
And so we, as part of our second year of the two-year plan, that's the number, which is the $2.6 million. And so they aren't projecting anything much higher or lower than what we said in our second year of our plan. Where they have the confidence, and they have this from operating other municipalities in California, is that they believe that there's potential to grow revenues over the next five years to beyond $2.7 million, where they can then obviously achieve some of that fiscal reward.
Okay, so probably next year in the report, well, things will be sort of flat, if I can put it that way, or slightly growing?
Well, $2.6 million would still be a growth of $150,000 from most recent fiscal year. So if we achieve $2.6 million, I'd be coming back to you and I'd be hoping that you'd be very happy about that.
Okay.
The $2.7 incentive is there to be a target that they need to aspire to. The intent was to provide some motivation for them to really go after it.
Yes, great, thank you.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I forgot to ask, so there's seven employees now who will be impacted by this. How many hourly employees, Mr. Sewell or Ms. Zachary, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, we have, I think, six hourly employees right now. We anticipate there could be six or seven by the time the contract goes in place in July. It varies based on the number of hours they work. And as you know, they're limited in terms of the number of hours they can work in any one year for the city. So as part of what we've been doing over the last number of months and will continue to do, is look for opportunities for those hourly staff to transition in the summertime, particularly spring, summer, we're always looking for more staff in the Parks Division because there's more work to be done in our parks with everything growing. So that's one area. And then we've also been suggesting to them that if they see permanent positions that are open to all city staff, that they seek out opportunities to apply for those positions. So we'll continue to work in that capacity with them.
So unlike the seven, we're not obligated to find them work, but we will try, correct? I hope so. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Just, it doesn't look to me like Courseco is going to make any kind of part of their presentation, or were they intending to come up and speak to us at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, they're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, well, I don't know whether you want to just finish your slides in your presentation. We kind of tangented here at this point, but I do have questions for them.
Yeah, why don't you come up? We were done with your presentation, so.
Okay. The, the other question I had was when Councilmember Rouse asked that, whether the contract that we have is similar to what other cities have done, you answered that, yes, the management model is a similar structure. I think what we're looking at specifically is, are the terms of this contract, is the way it's structured, this 15% incentive for revenue growth, is that typical? Or is that just something that we have devised on our own?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Hart, I can answer that from a point of view of the diligence that we did as the city, in that we reviewed a number of the contracts that both Courseco have in current operation and also other management companies have with other municipalities in the local area. And we also work with pro forma advisors, Gene Krikorian, who's unfortunately can't be with us here today. And so, yes, those incentive programs and many of the key terms are very, very similar, if not the same, with a number of other contracts which are currently in operation with other municipalities.
And then the other question I had was, the communities that you asked about the performance of this company, were those places where they have always had a management contract? And so their perception would be, you know, one management company to the next, yes, this is a good operator compared to the others, as opposed to somebody that had had experience with municipal employees who was able to say, yes, this has worked out in this kind of a transition?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, I can answer that with an affirmative that, yes, we have spoken with the City of Pacific Grove, wonderful part of the world. I had the pleasure of going up there and also talking with some people from the City of Pacific Grove. I believe Courseco took that contract, won that contract in 2014. And they, that was also a very similar situation to Santa Barbara, and it was city labor force. And so Courseco came in and transitioned from a city labor force. Because I agree with you, it would be, it could potentially be different if they transitioned from a management company to another management company. But yes, they have experience in doing that, and those contracts are very similar.
And then if somebody from Courseco would just come up for a minute, and I had a couple of questions for you.
Welcome, if you can state your name for the record, too. That'd be great.
Madam Mayor, Schneider, Councilmember Hart, Mike Short, COO of Courseco.
I'm Tom Bugbee, Vice President of Operations.
I was curious what you hope to achieve in terms of rounds and increase in revenue growth. I mean, obviously, this whole thing seems to be predicated on the assumption that you can do a better job in running the course and generating additional revenue. And so I'd like to know just from you directly, what do you see over a two- to five-year period in terms of rounds that we could kind of have as a benchmark in our minds?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, yes, we'll both answer this question. But I'd be remiss if I didn't take a brief 30 seconds to tell you a little bit about Courseco. We have been in business for 26 years. We have 26 golf courses. And in that 26 years, we have never had a contract canceled or failed to renew. We believe in long-term relationships. We believe in operating these community assets for, with a couple of guiding principles. One, financial performance. Two, community inclusion. Three, environmental stewardship and leadership. And four, stakeholder communication. We pride ourselves on our record. We are also the most decorated firm, regardless of size, when it comes to environmental leadership, recognized nationally with awards and accolades. So I wanted to at least share that, who you're partnering with. We are extremely excited about this opportunity to work at the City of Santa Barbara. We think we have a wonderful golf course, a wonderful platform to start with, and we're pretty excited about the potential and the upside. When you ask the question, the staff, about, is this a typical contract? All the contracts are different, but the, the meat and potatoes of the contract are very similar. A management fee and then some upside. We're very confident and bullish in the opportunity that Santa Barbara Golf Club has, hence why we set that threshold at 2.7, to be able to achieve that number. And then we believe we can participate in the upside. And that was the genesis of that number. We believe in it. I'm going to turn it to Tom Bugbee, our VP of Operations, to answer your question about what we can expect over two to five years when it comes to actual numbers and performance. Thank you.
Thank you. In our first year, we projected 4% rounds over the fiscal year 14, 15 actuals, and then 3% growth on rounds after that in the out-years. We based that off of really what the market is doing. There is a slight rebound in the golf market over the last couple of years, as well as just our market research and what we've done at other places. Staff did a great job during our interview of asking, okay, it was great, put numbers out there, but can you actually do it? And we provided several examples of recent transitions over the last two to five years, where we had actually exceeded those growths in the early years. And that's one of the reasons we're so optimistic about those revenues, and we're willing to essentially put a large part of our fee on being able to grow and hit those numbers.
And how important are the green fees? Is the contract that we have, where we're setting the green fees, different than other contracts that you have, or is that pretty typical within the business?
That's pretty typical of our municipal contracts. And actually, 21 out of our 26 are actually municipal, they're just fewer in other states. So municipal is the heart of what we do. It's very typical that it is set at the city level with approval. Obviously, we'll have recommendations within that. But we feel very confident that we don't need large increases to achieve these type of numbers. Through some of our sophisticated T-sheet management and utilization tools, we'll find opportunity within what's already happening out there.
Did you, when you first came with fresh eyes, did you consider lowering the fees as a way to generate rounds and increase revenues? Or is that something that was a construct that you didn't talk about?
We always look at every single avenue. We really try to walk into a new opportunity and look at it from ground level without any prejudice. And in this, there will be cases where we will do some discounting and some programming to fill areas of opportunity. A golf course is a little bit like an airplane seat. Once that tee time passes by, it's worth $0. You do have to protect your price integrity. You can't just sell it for a dollar just to be busy all the time. But we will be targeting some specific areas with specials or even new programs with approval that will increase our utilization and then get the right dollars where we can, including from the visiting tourists. That is one area that we see a large opportunity to make sure we're getting the right dollar amount from them when they come into town, while providing a great recreational experience to the residents.
And will you have new systems to track usage so that we have a better sense as to where that growth is coming from? I think we have not had really good data to date. So for example, when we're talking about the Montecito Country Club closure, that potential opportunity there, are you going to be able to tell us, yeah, this is a certain number of those golfers as opposed to somebody else?
Yeah, they, they do have a newer system in there, I think that's been installed within the last year or so. Systems, it's, you know, garbage in, garbage out. And so much of it is the training of what you do with your staff. Data collection is big in every business today. We measure that on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis and hold our managers accountable for that, because to your point, we have to know where our customers are coming from and where there's opportunities. Otherwise, we're just, dollars are going to be flowing by without us taking advantage of them.
So that is a point of focus of your company?
A big point of focus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And did you want to add anything?
Madam Mayor, Schneider, Councilmembers, I do. One of the topics that has been brought up today is the employees. We have been through these transitions at numerous facilities, and we are sensitive to the issues at hand. And in previous transitions, we need employees, we need staff, and the best pool to draw from is typically the staff that are already in place, institutional knowledge, history. They're an important group of people for us. And in our past, we hire typically in excess of 95% of existing staff when we come in. And there's reasons why it's not 100%, but I wanted to let the council know that Courseco understands the sensitivity of this.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to public comment. We do have a couple of speaker slips. Tom Widrow will be followed by Mark Rinconibara.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Tom Widrow, City Watch. This issue really hits at the heart of the existence of City Watch. We're interested in fiscal responsibility and good decision-making. And I just want to say, give hats off to staff for an excellent report today. If you recall, the initial staff recommendation that came to you earlier in the year recommended spending $50,000 in marketing to try to somehow magically turn the, I guess, turn the course for the golf course into one of solvency rather than one of insolvency at the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you recall, as an enterprise fund, the golf course was looking at eventually not having enough money even in reserves to keep up with maintenance. So I applaud the council's decision earlier in the year. And we support the decision to go with an outsource. I think it's an incredible opportunity. I use the golf course, people on our steering committee at City Watch use the golf course. Think it's a great place. I know, I'm friends with Chris Talarico, who runs a pro shop. He's done a great job. We also think Mulligan's is a great restaurant. So I think you really seize the moment by moving forward, and you've maintained some jobs and given an opportunity for some people to retire or stay on. And all in all, the idea when he just, the staff just spoke about $300,000 in improved cash flow, it seems like a pretty great decision and a very responsible one for a city council that I think, you know, is concerned with fiscal responsibility. So we support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Mark Rinconibara will be followed by Gretchen Ostergren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. My name is Mark Rinconibara. I'm the Vice Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I just want to also support the decision here today to go ahead and move forward with the management contract. We've been through several meetings and presentations by city staff on this whole issue, and we've had joint meetings, with the golf advisory committee. And due diligence, they've done a great job, they've done their homework, and we truly believe that this is going to put the golf course on a sustainable economic path so that there's no impact to the general fund. So we truly support the effort here today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gretchen Ostergren will be followed by John Craig, and the final speaker will be Melissa Osuna. Is Gretchen here? There she is. Come on up. You're going to wave your two minutes to Mr. Craig? Come on up. You're done. Okay, that should have come up. I'll let it happen this time, but, all right, so I'm going to take, so, and you're waving your two minutes? You're giving him your two minutes? Okay.
I'm only going to take two minutes.
All right, you're lucky. Okay, well, good, I'm going to keep you to that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider.
Thank you.
My name is Dominic Namneth. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Santa Barbara Men's Golf Club. I'm also the current Chair of the Golf Advisory Committee. I'm here speaking as an independent citizen, but I wanted to just kind of remind you of the path that we went to to get to here. You know, as part of the Golf Advisory Committee, we're trying to advise and speak to Parks and Rec Committee about, or Department, about what's going on at the golf course, you know? But we, we get things mixed up a little bit. But what I know is that, you know, we've turned over a lot of stones in this, you know? We've gone through marketing plans, we've gone through the refinance of the debt, we've gone through creating a player improvement fund to generate funds to pretty up the golf course where we were falling short on all these things. And today, you know, we're talking about this management contract, which is a huge swing, you know, from $60,000 in the red to $300,000 in the black, that really sets the stage for some opportunities moving forward. And I personally support this opportunity, and I really thank the staff for doing their due diligence and working through this. It was a lot of work, so that's it.
Thank you. You got, you did very well. Thank you. John Craig?
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm John Craig. I represent Los Pizanos for the Golf Advisory Board. I'm also, was on the Options Committee. And what I want to stress, and I'm glad the Santa Barbara Watch is here, during this process, we started out in the Options Committee, and this is a folder of all the stuff that I collected and studied. And during that process, we had two gentlemen that were unable to vote because they were marshals of the golf course. The city attorney said that there was a conflict of interest in favor of the pro shop. That might be, my point is that I know the civil advisory boards are hard for you to fill. I volunteered to do this, and I continue to volunteer. And we get volunteers that are unable to participate because the city attorney thinks there's a conflict of interest. And yet, when it gets right down to it, there was not one person on the Golf Advisory Board that was in the selection process of this, these management contracts that you're discussing today. So in my mind, all the energy and work that I put in, it was for naught. And whether or not the city attorney has come out and made a proclamation about a supporter of the Brown Act and open government, and that this process right here, in my mind, lacks One of the meetings we had at the GAC after the RFP was put out, we had two gentlemen from a company that was interested, and they were there. And we, as the GAC, were instructed not to contact anybody that was trying to, you know, bid on this contract. And I'm thinking, that's exactly... was trying to, you know, bid on this contract. And I'm thinking, that's exactly what they need to do, is talk to the people so that they can make better judgments as to how to, you know, proceed in their bid.
You need to wind up, please. You're at two minutes thirty.
Now, the good news is, and on a personal note, the selection of Courseco gives you a good chance of succeeding, as they were the first company to contact me and seem really sincere for the input and the process. So.
Thank you very much.
But my last, the Golf Advisory-
You're already at three minutes, Mr. Craig.
...will not be the scapegoat if this endeavor fails.
Okay, thank you very much. Final speaker would be Melissa Osuna. Is Melissa here? She left? Okay. So that concludes public comment. It's to the council. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this, first of all, this is really a TOPS staff presentation and on one of the more difficult items that we've had to deal with this year. And I think that we're seeing a very positive next step, one that, in which I place a lot of hope. I expect we'll have enough support here to move forward with this. But I think what we're seeing in the way of a plan is one that is win-win. And that in five years, if we, as we expect, we'll have, and also, we have a reclaimed water system up and running, so now we can keep it green. And that's another key piece of this puzzle. So I'm supportive of this plan. I appreciate that the staff has done the research it has. What we're hearing about Courseco is a really positive next step. So when it comes time, I would appreciate the opportunity to make the motion to support this.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I think this is not clearly a win-win. It may be a win-win. It's a bet that in time, it's going to be a win-win. But in the next fiscal year, it's a lose because we are going to take, we're basically going to subsidize the golf fund with general fund revenues as we transition employees from the golf course to the general fund in the Parks Department. So that, and this is the first time in all the deliberations we've had that we've had a number associated with that. And it's not an inconsequential number. Maybe it's a worst-case scenario, the $600,000 number. If it is, it's a big worst-case scenario. And it eliminates any potential savings from this effort for nearly four years. That would have been helpful, I think, for the deliberations that we had previously, to have that number integrated into the spreadsheet to talk about a $300,000 cost savings that many members of the public are looking at. That isn't there until all those employees transition to other jobs that are vacated by existing city employees in the Parks Department. So hopefully, that does happen. Hopefully, it transitions quickly, and we can actually realize savings. I do think, I am impressed by Coursecompany's presentation today. I have confidence and hope that you're going to be able to meet these targets. Because essentially, that's the whole issue. You know, we are not solving the problem by eliminating city employees from this equation. The only way to solve this problem is to grow rounds on the golf course. And we're betting that you're going to do that. And we'll find out. And we hope so. If you do, you're going to make more money. We're going to make more money. And we're going to stabilize this fund. And hopefully, you won't have to do that by cutting costs. And I, we have a system in place that I have confidence that you won't be able to do that. And I don't think you intend to do that. So I'm encouraged in that respect. But I do think that this is a bet. And I don't think we needed to do this bet. I think we could have had the upside of this plan by having a new operator and the energy that they bring to that, and retain the city employees, and had this work out in the long run financially by having rounds grown. This is not a $300,000 problem. When we ended up with the plan to refinance the golf course debt and to increase the marketing budget, we ended up with a $100,000 a year problem. And our first year, we're going to spend $600,000 extra thousand on city employees that are going to be working in the Parks Department as opposed to working on the golf course. That does not make any financial sense. There's just no way anybody up here with a straight face can say, this is a good business deal in the short run. The only way this is a good deal is in the long run, as we get out of that trough. So I wish we had had that information when we discussed this previously. I think, you know, it would have taken a very long-term spreadsheet to show how this makes sense. So I don't think I'm going to support it for the reasons that I have articulated all along. But I am, I am hopeful that this works out in the long run. I'd like to be wrong about this. I'd like you to meet these targets quicker than I think is going to happen, and to have this end up being a net plus. But, you know, we'll be looking at this very carefully every year to see whether or not this is working.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, none of this comes as a surprise to me. The good news is, was apparent the last time we talked about this. I think you've done a great job and built in a lot of protections for the city. And I think for the golfers, too, a great improvement. The only additional thing I could think is, I hope you all can do a rain dance so that it really does get green out there, not only in honey but in grass. So I would move that we approve and authorize the city administrator to enter into a management contract with Santa Barbara Golf LLC, wholly owned subsidiary of Courseco. Thank you.
There's a second, Mr. White?
Well, I might as well second.
Okay, Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to honor all the people who have toiled on behalf of our golf course over the years and made us proud. I do not believe, I do not believe that replacing employees dedicated to public service and government service with a nonprofit company is going to serve the public. I think the figures of savings have been inflated. I agree with Councilmember Hart about that. I wish Courseco the best, but I will be voting no. And I'll be thinking about our employees who are facing job insecurity here during the holidays. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can say with a straight face, this is a good business deal for the city in the short term and the long term. And if my fellow council members recall, the numbers we were looking at, the cost of having SEIU employees doing this work amounted to essentially twice as much as comparable golf courses. We're not talking about $100,000 a year here. We're talking about savings in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 a year. The extra costs that we are incurring, very temporarily, are the result, as one of the Courseco representatives put it, of being very sensitive to the needs of our existing city employees and making sure that if they want the opportunity to continue working with the city, that they get it. And they may have that opportunity to work with Courseco as well. So any extra costs that we're incurring here, which again, are very temporary, those are entirely the result of making sure that our city employees are well compensated and well taken care of, yes, at this holiday time. So I'm very hopeful. I'm glad that we found a company that has a lot of experience managing municipal golf courses and doing well. And this takes a real problem off the city's hands. The golf course is an enterprise fund. It has to be self-funding. The trend lines were absolutely clear. This was going downhill. And given Courseco's record, I think we have a really positive outlook. And I fully support this idea. It's absolutely the best for the city.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, one of the reasons why I asked about comparable contracts with other agencies was, was just this, is that we're not the first agency to do this, and there's good reasons for it. It has a proven track record. This company has a proven track record. What we learned in all these hearings was how passionate this community was for the golf course. It took me a little unawares, actually, how many people showed up, how many people really cared. So you will have eyes on you the entire time you're operating. Trust us on that. But I do think that this is a good deal for the short and the long term. I think this is the way we can save the course. The course was potentially going away otherwise. So this is the right move, and hopefully, you're the right company. Because, like I said, this community is very passionate about their golf course. It's a good one, deserves to be saved.
Okay, well, I wish Courseco well because, for a whole lot of reasons, it's all been set up here. I believe your intentions are good ones. I believe it's, I agree with staff that you have a good track record. And so, and appreciate you being here today. So that was important, that you're here today, to hear concerns. I hope you've already eaten at Mulligan's. If you haven't, you need to. Just ask anyone who goes to the golf course or here. I was also in disagreement with moving in this direction, and still am not convinced that it is the best long-term scenario. So I think, just to stay consistent with that, you certainly have enough votes for this contract. And I hope, as Mr. Hart was saying, we can be proven wrong. But, you know, I think, for all the reasons that we've said many times over the year, I'm going to vote no on this particular item. So since we'll have a split vote, if we could do a roll call, please. We have a motion by Hotchkiss and a second by White.
Councilmember Francisco?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Maria?
Opposed.
Rouse?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
No. So that passes four to three with Maria, Hart, and Schneider opposed. Okay, thank you, and best of luck moving forward with this. Item number 23.
Zoning information report process improvements, municipal code amendment to establish a minor zoning exception process, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Municipal Code Chapter 28.92 to add Section 2892130 regarding minor zoning exceptions for errors in zoning information reports.
Who's taking this over? Go right ahead whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you, Mayor Schneider, members of the City Council. The minor zoning exception process was an outcome of the ZIR Working Group. As you recall, in January of 2014, there was a working group established to make recommendations for process improvements to the ZIR preparation process. And like I said, this was one of the outcomes. There's been a series of public hearings held on the proposed process as well as the ordinance. The most recent one was in November of this year, where the Planning Commission reviewed and made recommendations to the city council. And their recommendation was for the council to adopt the ordinance with a couple changes. One being the inclusion of facade changes within the interior setback, and the second one was the inclusion of appeal process. The purpose of the minor zoning exception process is to give staff the administrative authority to sign off on minor variations of the zoning standard. Currently, staff does not have that administrative authority. So if a property owner were to wish to keep a violation on the site and to legalize it, they'd have to go through the modification hearing process. And although we waive the fees for these types of projects that involve the discrepancy, it still can be time-consuming. Therefore, this process would then give staff the ability to grant some minor exceptions. It's noted, though, however, that there will be still some more major violations that will need to apply for a modification, or if the can't, modification can't be supported, it'll have to be removed. The proposed ordinance also includes a list of eligible improvements, and I'll go over those in a moment, as well as required findings. There's five required findings for all exceptions, and then there's four additional findings that apply only in certain circumstances. So in regards to the eligible improvements, there's three main categories. The first is unpermitted alterations and additions to legal non-conforming buildings. The second is as-built additions or expansions of hardscape, landscape, and site improvements. And the third is as-built detached accessory buildings. So in regards to unpermitted alterations and additions to legal non-conforming buildings, I first kind of want to remind the council and everyone watching what a legal non-conforming building is. In this instance here, you see a house, and it protrudes into the required setback. Well, this house was built with a building permit, and it was built at a time where the setbacks were different. And since that time, the setbacks have changed. And so therefore, it's considered legal non-conforming because it was built with a building permit, and it conformed with the standards at that time. So when I'm talking about a legal non-conforming structure, it's one that was built with a building permit and conformed to the zoning then. I'm not talking to the actual improvement having to be considered legal non-conforming because that's why it's a violation. It's never had a building permit. So in regards to the first category, or the first improvement that could be eligible, is the conversion of a carport to a garage, or vice versa, a garage to a carport. And this is allowed if the, or this could qualify for exception, if the carport or garage meets the minimum standards, minimum dimensions, or a waiver is obtained by the Transportation Division. The second example is over here on the right, where what would be eligible to get an exception would be the conversion of a garage to a living area. So in this example, it's, within the interior setback, you can see, so it's, that's the zoning violation is the fact that it's in the interior setback, and it was converted to a different use. There is a particular finding that pertains in this situation, and that is that the configuration and number of parking spaces must be what was there required at the time of the conversion, not current requirements. So way back when we did require either one covered or one uncovered parking space, if they show that that was on-site, then they could qualify for an exception. The next example is here on the left, and it's new windows in the first story, on the first story in the interior setback. And here's the example, the windows in the non-conforming portion of the building can get a minor zoning exception. This window here, if this was as-built, meaning it didn't get a building permit, this, it wouldn't be applicable because it's not a zoning violation. What we're talking about is improvements that are a zoning violation. Also, in this example, this is where the Planning Commission recommended that facade changes be allowed within the interior setback, too. The next category is on the right side of the screen, and that's alterations in the front setback. And what we're proposing to include is new doors or new windows, as well as facade changes within the, within the front setback. In regards to encroaching ground floor additions, they could qualify if they're located in the interior or rear, interior or rear setbacks, and that they're no more than 250 square feet. And that's the total size of the addition, not just the area in the setback. So if the total area is less than 250 square feet, and it doesn't result in a new residential unit or an increase in density, that could qualify. Again, this has a special finding that the as-built addition represents a uniform extension of an existing legal non-conforming wall. So here, you can see it's in line with the existing wall, and that it's generally no closer to the property line than the legal portion of the, of the non-conforming building. So this would meet that exception. The next example is alterations to roof height. And there, they could qualify if they don't increase the height in the setback more than one foot. And here's the existing permitted situation. You see the house is permitted at 15 feet. And the portion, here's the setback line, the portion within the setback is 12 feet. And so in this instance, they increased the height by 20 feet. So although the height itself was more than five feet, the portion within the setback, you can see here, it only increased by a foot. So that could qualify for a minor exception. There is an additional finding in this, for this particular situation, is that the building, so the building as a whole complies with the applicable building height and building story requirements of the zone. So that would include solar access. So we'd have to just make sure that we're not causing impacts on the neighbor's property. The next one has to do with architectural features. And bay windows could be, could qualify if they're at least three feet above the finished grade or finished floor, whichever is higher. So you can see here in the picture how the bay window, it's at least three feet above the finished grade, that it doesn't extend more than three feet, an additional three feet into the setback, so the distance here, and then if it's at least five feet from the front property line. The next example is a covered or uncovered porch. And in this picture, it's actually covered porch, but it can qualify if it doesn't extend above the ground floor level, which means this area here, you can see it provides a way to get into the door. So it doesn't extend above the ground floor level, and that the dimensions of the porch doesn't exceed six feet by four feet. And then it can, it can't be located again more than five feet from the front property line. In regards to uncovered balconies, they are allowed in the front setback. They can encroach an additional two feet into the front setback. But again, it's five feet from the front- an additional two feet into the front setback. But again, it's five feet from the front property, and so it's consistent with all the improvements. In regards to entrance landings on the interior, in the interior setback, they can be, or they, if they are unenclosed or uncovered, they can encroach an additional three feet, so this way. But they have to be at least two feet from the interior property line, and they can't exceed the building code requirements for their size. And then the last one is chimneys and architectural features. They can encroach an additional two feet into the, any setback. But if they're in the interior setback, they need to be at least three feet. And if they're in the front setback, again, five feet. In regards to interior additions, they're within the volume of a, of a home. An interior addition that exceeds the maximum floor area ratio, or FAR, and if they're located within the setback, that would now require a modification. But we're proposing that that be part of the exceptions. And the caveat is it has to be within the legal volume of a building. So if someone went and increased the height of their house and converted that area, they would need to apply for a modification. That's not considered a minor type thing, so they would need a modification. But if it's within the existing volume, and it's a attic, or maybe a cellar, then, and it's within the setback, the portion of the building, that could qualify. In regards to hardscape, landscape, and site improvements, within the setback, open yard area, or minimum distance between buildings, decorative features such as mailboxes, or light posts, or flagpoles, or stuff like that, they can be allowed in the front yard or open yard. If they're in the front yard, the combined area of it can't exceed 50 square feet. And if they're in, within the required open yard area, which is down here, the combined area of all those types of features can't exceed 20%. And that's consistent with the existing encroachments that are allowed within open yard areas, like gazebos and that kind of thing. They can't take up more than 20% of your open yard area. This provision is not applicable to barbecues or fireplaces within the setbacks. Those would need to apply for a modification in those situations because they do have the potential to cause nuisance issues with the neighbors, and they, they could still apply for a modification. But we're not proposing that to be part of the minor zoning exceptions. Attached decks could qualify if they are no more than 200 square feet, they're located at least two feet from the interior property line, and again, that they don't, they're no higher than the ground floor level. And you can see with this example, that illustrated. Fountains, they're, they'd be able to get an encroachment. And then trash enclosures, as long as they're at least 10 feet from the front property line, and two feet from the interior property line. And again, there's special findings that apply to these types of improvements, that if they're in the front yard area, that they meet the driveway and corner visibility requirements of the Public Works Department, because we don't wanna cause a off-site impact. In regards to as-built detached accessory structures, they could qualify. They're located in the interior or rear yard, provided they don't exceed 120 square feet. They're not a separate dwelling unit. They're not within the front yard area, which would be up in front of the house, or within the required open yard area, and that, that they've been on the site prior to August 1st in 1975. Oversized accessory buildings, they were proposed to be eligible for an improvement if the size doesn't exceed the requirements by more than 100 square feet. So this is a garage example, the maximum size is 500 square feet. So if it doesn't exceed the, by more than 100 square feet, it could qualify. And if it's not in the open yard area, if it meets the height requirements, and again, if it's there on the site prior to 1975. So in regards to required findings, the ones, I covered some of them with the eligible improvements discussion. There's some additional ones. The, the two main ones, or there's three main ones, is that the improvement is a subject of a discrepancy or error in the ZIR. The next one is that the site, the improvement must have existed on the site in its current form prior to 1980, or in the case of accessory structures, 1975. And the reason why we have the two separate dates is because there was a pretty major change to accessory structure provisions in 1975. So it's a, kind of a clear line in the sand that we can use to determine the improvements. The next finding, it's an important one, is that the improvement won't affect historic resources. And so this is a determination that our urban historian makes on a daily basis. So it's something we'd run by them, just to make sure we're not causing an impact to historic resources. Another finding I didn't cover is that the improvement is in general compliance with the Single Family Design Board Good Neighbor Guidelines, and that's mainly in regards to privacy, lighting, landscaping, and noise. And then the last finding that I didn't cover was if the improvement's within the open yard, or minimum distance between buildings, that the site will maintain adequate yard areas. So the ordinance also contains a provision that conditions can be placed on the property if necessary to minimize potential adverse impacts on neighboring properties. And this would be mainly in regards to the Good Neighbor policies, so screening, privacy-type things. However, they, they must only be proportionate to the potential impacts on neighboring properties. In regards to appeal process, staff's drafts, that before the ordinance committee and the Planning Commission recommended that the approval be final and effective on the date that it was made. And the reason is that it, the whole intent of a minor zoning exception process is to allow these minor projects, and to facilitate the, the resolution of the issues. And it's not, I haven't seen other jurisdictions, and I know our current administrative review process for design review, we have a current process for design review administrative approvals, as well as the fence height exception administrative approvals, none of those are appealable. And the idea with this process is that you have these set of criteria, you meet them, and you approve it. At the Planning Commission hearing, as well as the ordinance committee, the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors requested that an appeal process be established, so that major issues can be heard by the city council. Again, these are all minor-type issues, so I don't see the necessity of an appeal. However, the Planning Commission, they did agree with staff's recommendation regarding appeal to a hearing body, like the Planning Commission or the city council. But they did include in their recommendation that it be appealable at administrative level. So an appeal to the Community Development Director. And that's what's before the ordinance today, or before the council today. If you were to adopt the ordinance with the appeal provision, we would request that you discuss the appropriateness of a fee for the appeal. Like I said earlier, currently we don't charge fees for modifications that are, that involve a discrepancy between a ZIR. We're trying to facilitate and help and resolve these issues. And so staff is carrying forward that thought process with this minor zoning exception process. We're not proposing a fee to be charged for the minor zoning exception process. And we do realize it'll represent a loss of revenue of about $5,000 to $10,000 to the Planning Division, but it's just to make good on these discrepancies. But in terms of the appeal, that's not a typical, it's not something that we would typically do. And so we estimate that there'd be four to five hours between the staff hearing officer's time and the Community Development's time to review these types of appeals. And just to give you some ideas of rates, our current planning staff hourly rate is $140 per hour. And then the current minimum appeal fee for, well, this says discretionary view, it's actually for administrative appeals, so like, appeal of a 30-day letter is $225. So we would request the city council to discuss the appropriateness of a fee. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council review the ordinance, hold the public hearing, and introduce, and then subsequently adopt the zoning, minor zoning exception ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two public comments. Speaker slips here. Mr. Hotchkiss, did you have a question?
A quick question, clarification on required findings, material discrepancy or error in ZIR which directly involves the zoning standard from which relief is sought. Could you explain what that means? Or give an example?
Okay, I just, sorry. I wrecked the slide. Yes. So in terms of a material discrepancy, what we mean by a material discrepancy is it actually relates to the improvement in questions. So Nasaia ZIR in, you know, the 70s indicated that there was an addition to the house, but didn't identify that it was a zoning violation. And then today, it is, we call it out as a zoning violation. That would be a material discrepancy. It's actually that was there. If the ZIR back in 1970 said it was like a two-bedroom, three-bath home, and said that the addition was a zoning violation, and today, the today's ZIR says now it's a four-bedroom home, a four-bedroom, two-bath home, and it still calls out that zoning violation, that's not a material discrepancy on the violation itself. That is a discrepancy or inconsistency in the ZIR, but it's not one on the actual violation itself.
So that could be handled administratively, is what you're saying?
The example-
Minor zoning.
The example that I gave where it's, it's not, when the violation was mischaracterized, that could be handled administratively. For the second example, when the, the violation was consistently categorized correctly, that would not, they would need to apply for a modification. The other thing I'd like to actually point out to the council is, we are undergoing the new zoning ordinance update, the Enzo process, and we are looking at expanding the types of projects that could qualify for a mi, for a minor zoning exception. So that will provide another relief mechanisms for the second example.
How soon can we expect that, do you think?
The anticipation is about a year, a year to council. We're in the process right now. We had the second working group meeting of the Module Two, which outlined some of the provisions, and we're targeting a public hearing before the Planning Commission early next year. But it's, it's still about a year away. What we're trying to resolve right now is to work on these discrepancies-type things.
So if we pass this now in 30 days, this could be law?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what today is actually, let me clarify that. Today is the introduction, and then it has to come back on your next meeting, which happens to be January 12th, and then 30 days from there. So yes, it'll be sooner than a year and a half, a year. Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was related to the Enzo process, because I know in the Module Two, we were specifically looking at open yard, interior setbacks, and accessory buildings. So what we're looking at today is today's zoning ordinance, then. And we'll make adjustments in a year's time? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Maria, you're correct. At one point, when we were going through this ZIR process improvements, we were gonna just roll this all into the Enzo process, but we wanted this to go forward before that. So we proceeded at this time. But we do know, or we do expect that the types of projects that can qualify will be expanded, to what scope, we don't know.
Okay. And I know Ms. Pleiser has been attending our Enzo meetings, so that's a good thing that she's represented there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
How many of these kind of things do you expect in a year?
It's really hard to determine, because we estimate, we do maybe between 45 and 50 ZIRs per month, and maybe two to four have some kind of discrepancy per month. So I don't know how many of those actually involve a zoning violation, how many will want to abate it at this time, and then how many in the past that we've already identified want to come forward right now and get the zoning part of it resolved. So it's hard to quantify. But I think it will be an improvement, and it will help property owners.
All right. With that, we'll go to Tom Woodrow, and then Reina Stapleman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick, City Watch favors any improvements to the city process, and it sounds like that this is an improvement to the minor zoning exception process. I think, last time you brought this up, or you were discussing this, we had a few questions, and maybe I can meet with one of you, or with city staff to clarify. But I just still wondered, are there communities that have a voluntary ZIR process, and why in a general sense is ours mandatory? I also know that Councilmember Francisco's talked about the idea that the ZIR origin back in the 70s focused on, primarily on parking and illegal dwellings. And certainly, we support that, and folks on our steering committee were thrilled that we actually do, do a good job of enforcing that. At the same time, anything that can make it simple, less effective, I mean, more effective, and a little bit like every other community in the state of California, because I don't think anyone does it quite the way that we do it. And finally, just one question I had, and I can ask our city administrator, is do we have building inspectors go out to do these ZIRs, or is it planners, or is it both, and are they cross-trained? So I just took the opportunity to, a few general comments on ZIRs, but we do support the improvements that the committee came up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stapleman?
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and councilmembers. I'm Reina Stapleman, president of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, until the end of the month. As you know, ZIRs are an issue we have all been struggling with for years. The ZIR working group developed solutions to some of the problems of ZIRs, but unfortunately, the overarching problems of reliability and accountability have still not been resolved, with which the grand jury agrees. We would like to reiterate that we are still encouraging you to make ZIRs voluntary. With that being said, we are here to discuss the minor zoning exception process. The Santa Barbara Association of Realtors supports the Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the ordinance amendment, with the revisions to allow facade alterations within the interior setback to qualify for a mining zoner, zoning exception, and to allow for an appeal of the decision on a minor zoning exception to the Community Development Director. There should not be an appeal fee, since this process not only rectifies incorrect minor issues with the zoning information report, but it is also to be an inexpensive fix. According to the staff report, if appeals to the Community Development Director occur, it would be a minor increase to the workload. It would behoove this council to keep this process simple and inexpensive, instead of another potential layer of costs. We are hopeful that this will help alleviate some of the problems revolving around ZIRs. Thank you to staff and the Planning Commission for working so diligently on this issue, and we look forward to seeing this ordinance amendment implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to the council.
Ms. Maria?
Did you say me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I support the recommendation. I think staff and the industry have worked really hard on this. I also support a fee structure. The question has been answered, whether this is gonna be voluntary. And I'm sort of talking to the two people who are talking to themselves out there. We've talked a lot about making it voluntary, and so it's here. And I hope there's gonna be some acceptance about that. And we've worked hard to, to help you and respond to your concerns, I believe. So I'm for it, and I'll make a motion to that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I guess, is that, that, like, the second, okay, there's a motion to approve the staff recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
Move second by Hart. Okay, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I've said many times before, I believe that the ZIR process that Santa Barbara has is onerous, and voluntary would be a good idea. I know that's very much a minority opinion on this council, and I believe that these steps that have been described are at least a step in the right direction, and therefore, I will support them.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I also wanted to emphasize that in this whole evolution we go through with the ZIRs, and as much effort as we put into them, that reliability and accountability are still something we need to achieve on a much higher basis. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the fee structure, only because, not that I, I don't believe there's staff time, and we need to make cost recovery, but since the process is in the middle of its evolutionary mode, I was wondering if, if, if it's as wise to go with a, a fee structure at this point. Ms. Ritten, would you repeat for me, please, what the frequency of the actual appeals per month are on these?
Well, this is gonna be a brand-new process. So currently, there's no fee. In terms of, like, design, our design review, administrative review approval, and the fence height exceptions, they don't have appeal. So it's hard to quantify. In terms of the number of discrepancies we see, we do between 45 to 50 ZIRs a month, and we estimate between two to four have some kind of discrepancy. I don't have any way to find out what the discrepancy is. So I don't know how to answer that question.
Right. I'm just wondering, in the meantime, as we go into this new process, and it is- Right, I'm just wondering, in the meantime, as we go into this new process, and it is a mystery to a lot of folks as this goes on, and whether or not, as these questions get answered, and as it becomes more and more clear to both the staff and to the public, if maybe we shouldn't even consider either a no-fee period for appeals, or, and to come back with that later. I'm just a little concerned about that, given our, you know, where we've been with ZIRs over these many years.
Yeah, well, Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, you know, if you talk about like a trial period, we could do this until we work on the fee schedule for next fiscal year, and see what kind of impact that is. That might be an option at this time, no fee.
We're not voting on a fee today. This is just the ordinance today. Is that correct?
We would need direction on a fee. Should we be charging a fee? And if so, how much, and the different options that I-
Okay, so we need to clarify the motion, because I was understanding what we were, what the motion was, was just on the ordinance, and if you want, so we should have a separate motion on the, so is there a number? Maybe, I'm sorry, I missed that. Oh, okay, because I heard you say you needed direction, not that this was-
Correct. Madam Mayor, before you today is introduction of the ordinance, and that ordinance does build in an appeal process. Staff would recommend against the appeal process, but should you vote, or make the motion and vote towards what's written in the ordinance, we're asking for direction for a fee, because we don't have before you today action on the fee resolution.
Right, I think we're saying the same thing. The motion includes the appeal process. I was asking, are we determining the amount of the fee when, in this motion? And I didn't see a number in the ordinance, that's why, so I think the answer is no, and you want a separate thing about what the amount of the fee is. Mr. Kulan? Because I think we have a difference of opinion.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, this slipped my attention earlier. I don't think you have a proper agenda notice to even discuss a fee at this point.
Okay. So the motion is to establish, to introduce the ordinance that includes the appeal process, and we can have a separate discussion about the fee, but you want direction now about that, and so I heard Ms. Mario saying-
I was ready to go for that, but I hear the legalities, so thank you, ma'am.
All right, and I think I hear Mr. Rouse having a different opinion.
No, but I will support it with that in mind.
With an appeal process?
Yes.
Right, okay, all right. Just want to make sure we know what we're voting on. Great, thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, to back up to the presentation, and I'll speak a little bit about it in a minute, when we go over our council reports, but what a machine gun of specificities there that Ms. Reardon put at us, and that we didn't have access to in our, in our staff report. So that was, I'm all tuned up for it, having been sitting in on the Enzo activities, and but that's an awful lot of staff work that obviously has gone into this, to try and put this, put these squirrels in the right boxes, and come up with a rational process. And so I'm grateful for that. I am also grateful for the, for the whole use of these, of these reports. They're just, they've been very handy for, in my work over the years, and I just think it's worth the extra effort that this city undertakes. So I'll be certainly be supporting, moving forward with it. I appreciate Mr. Rouse's comment, and I think what we could about a trial period without a fee for the appeal, and I think we can at least agenda, ask it to be agendized in the future for consideration. And so that would be how I would like to handle that piece of it. I would support the appeal process, and have a trial period without a fee is kind of where I would like us to, what I'd like us to consider next year at the, at the right time.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question. You said you had, you do 40 ZIRs a month, correct?
About 40 to, 45 to 50.
All right, and you said only four of those have discrepancies?
It's more closer to two, but between two to four.
So 38 to 45, or 43 are all, all okay? They're just saying no, no, what, faults, or discrepancies, or errors, or whatever?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no, that's actually a different statistic. All of the ZIRs we do, about 82% of the ZIRs have some kind of violation.
Right.
And then of those 82%, about 83 are considered minor, so they aren't referred for medium enforcement. And then the other, what, that's 18%, are considered major violations, and they're referred for enforcement. And what we call major violations are illegal dwelling units, loss of required parking, the construction of new habitable square footage, or development on the coastal bluff.
Right.
So that's a different statistic.
Because those other numbers didn't make sense to me. All right, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So I'm definitely supportive of this ordinance, and I hope the Enzo, it's great that you're doing some great work on updating the zoning ordinance, and maybe there's another layer of things that can be added to this ordinance of examples, and that's what you're going through now, so, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this up earlier. I frankly think we should not have a fee, at least to start and see how it goes, but it's, so, for a whole lot of reasons I don't necessarily need to get into, but I think it sounds like this kind of situation might be pretty few, but significant to the people who might have to go through the process for the individuals. And so in terms of a financial hit, I don't see it as a big financial hit, and yet it could help the process involved in streamlining it. So I'm fine with the appeal process. I currently don't think we need a fee, but it sounds like the best, my direction would be, I guess, and I'm hearing that we have to, we go through the fee schedule anyway during the budget process, so let's just add that to the discussion. I could just tell you right now, I'm not interested in adding a fee to an appeal to this, but I think that would be the appropriate time to have that conversation, so really between now and then, there would be no dollar fee, right? I think that's how I'm understanding what we're doing. Okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second, right? Anything else on the motion? All in favor? Hi, great. All right, thank you. Councilmember Committee assignment reports? Any councilmember Committee assignment reports? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as I was alluding to, the Enzo Committee met yesterday, and finished up Module Two, and if your eyes were spinning from the first batch of Ms. Reardon's graphs, and site plans, and concepts, you would, you would have been right in tune with yesterday's meeting. We even got off the fancy PowerPoints and on to chalk talk with Mr. Cato showing new examples of such things as accessory buildings, configuration attachment, non-conforming uses, reconstruction of non-conforming, non-residential buildings, and other similarly exciting topics. And we're, but it is coming along, it's really neat, and also it's a good, it's a group of people who are really interested in, in this topic, and are chewing on these bits and pieces carefully, and with the, with the goal of bringing forward the new zoning ordinance with, that's going to be cleaner, more rational, and more user-friendly.
Mr. Rouse?
Oh, I do have one more thing, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. And that is, the Water Commission met yesterday, and I was unable to attend, however, and I've been playing message tag with Mr. Hagmark, because there's, there is one important item on there, and I was looking in my emails, I was countering our guideline of not looking at our emails, hoping that Mr. Hagmark would be emailing the discussion about the contaminated soil at the D-Sale site, and because on yesterday's agenda, there was a, an item to, of increasing the budget on the D-Sale by, is it, is it $2 million? Is that the, is that the right number?
In the worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario. For dealing with contaminated soil at the D-Sale plant. And I, it's obviously, it's a hit, and we're concerned about it, but, and I would appreciate it, even as we go into the Christmas break and all, that we, that we really be apprised of where we are, where we're going, schedule, and every bit of news on it, so that we're all, I'm getting little bits of feedback from folks, and I'd like to be able to deliver as good an information as possible when it comes up. But anyway, it's a, it's a bump in the road on that, on that issue.
Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the last meeting of Browning Allen of the Parking Committee, as he's retiring, and that meeting, Matt Libery will be replaced by Trey Pinder as chairman of that organization. And then on Friday, I traveled to San Luis Obispo for the League of Cities meeting, along with Ms. Neames from the Finance Department, to check out all the fun rules and regulations and suppositions and questions that are coming up about all the new medical marijuana regulations. So I will be, we'll have some information to share as we get into it after the first year, but I will share the city website, the website information, so that everybody can get up to speed on all the questions. I must say that of all the agencies from Ventura to San Luis Obispo that I saw, I think we're actually at least ahead of the game, in terms of what our, our legal department's got us prepared for, as opposed to some of our sister agencies.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The youth council met yesterday, and they are asking for a presentation on the Bicycle Master Plan update, not to make a formal recommendation, of course, but just as an informational item for them. I participated in Wreaths Across America over the weekend, and I'm grateful to Marge Beavers of the Veterans Group, who, they put wreaths on veterans' graves across America. We were at the Santa Barbara Cemetery, and I really appreciate Ms. Beavers organizing that. And then also, we had a lot of fun at the Milpus Holiday Parade, and thanks to Milpus Motors for letting us ride in those cool cars. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss and I, and met with, and Mr. Casey met with Ginny Brush, who's the retiring, she's not retiring, never mind, she's retiring. Not shying retiring, but she's leaving her employment as the Arts Commissioner for the county, and just to have a transition conversation of all the things related to the arts in the city of Santa Barbara, and the process, and all the contracts, and I think with the position of the public, I think, I think the process is moving along smoothly. We got a good update, and I know Nina Johnson's part of the hiring panel for Ginny's successor, so that's good, and there was a number of good applications, so we should know early next year who that should be, and, but I just want to let people know, we, the city's very much involved in that, because we do give the county significant funds towards that partnership, in order for us to have a good arts program in the city. So that was, and Frank is, Mr. Hotchkiss is our liaison to the Arts Advisory Committee, so it was a good, I thought, I felt comfortable that things were moving, transition-wise anyway, pretty well. And then also, on Friday, was the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, more governance issues county-wide dealing, that there's a process that's moving forward, but it has to do with how it relates to who has control over data, and the HUD requirements from the, from the federal government into the, into the county. It's complicated. We, hopefully, will get some structure in place soon, so that we can focus more of our time on how to help homeless people off the streets into supportive housing, and not about, you know, bylaws and things like that, but we'll get there. So that's in process. Okay, and with that, we have a closed session item.
Conference with city attorney regarding pending litigation. The litigation is Daniel Corrigan versus the City of Santa Barbara, WCAB case number ADJ 10007046, and an additional closed session regarding public employee appointment. See Government Code Section 54954.5, Parks and Recreation Director.
And I do expect us to report out on item 25, but I'm going to, just so now people are watching, we are going to adjourn when we are adjourned in the memory of Dennis Ricard, who very suddenly passed away over the weekend. He was last year's, last year's El Presidente, and it's my understanding, through some Facebook postings, that he had some medical ailment that went in the wrong direction very quickly, and so a pillar of our society, and was part of the 90th anniversary of Old Spanish Days, his long history of his family, long history of the Ricard family, our new terminal is named after his father. So when we do adjourn, we will do so in his memory. So with that, we'll go to closed session. So with that, we'll go to closed session.